He was really good. We had a good.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Manhattan City Commission to order. If you would join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Tonight, we're, our work session is devoted to the possibility, the ramifications of annexing some of the area east of Manhattan. And as you know, that's going to be a topic for a good long time. It's not going to happen overnight. There's a lot of steps and a lot of people to hear and talk about, to talk to. So at this point, who's going to be making the presentation? Eric Cattell, the Director of Community Development, wrote the materials for tonight. So, welcome Eric. Glad to see you.
Well, I wrote the cover, my one, not the report, yes.
Yeah. Well.
Good evening. Just a reminder, tonight, we're talking about the Green Valley Annexation Fiscal Impact Analysis. We engaged with Tischler Bice, our consultant, to do this workforce. And Julie Herlins, who's one of the Vice Presidents, is here to do the presentation. Just to provide a brief overview, back in 2019, Potawatomi County completed their own governance study to look at different options for addressing growth and development services needs in the Green Valley area. And one of those options, obviously, is annexation. Following that, in August 2019, the city engaged with Tischler Bice to do this fiscal impact analysis for us, which will be the topic for tonight's discussion. Just as a reminder, the city and Potawatomi County have actually had a long history of planning together. Manhattan has been a two-county city for over 50 years. But some of the cooperative planning initiatives that we've engaged in over the years back in, really, the first one was the Urban Area Plan back in 1987. Then a Highway 24 corridor plan in 2002, followed by the Manhattan Urban Area Comprehensive Plan in 2003. And then another update of the US 24 corridor management plan in 2009. And then finally, in 2015, with the most recent update of the Urban Area Comprehensive Plan. And then, as well, the Blue River and Kansas River Floodplain Management Plan. All of those plans have been adopted, both by the city and Potawatomi County over the years. So cooperative planning has been something that we've been doing for quite a while. I should remind you that tonight, we're really only talking about the first phase of the whole process of looking at potential annexation of different portions of the Green Valley area. So Phase One is tonight, which is what this report is about. It's really just a fiscal analysis. It's not a survey or a question of should we or shouldn't we. It's merely a cost-benefit analysis. And so after the presentation and discussion tonight, we'll be looking for direction from the City Commission on what you want to do, what next steps do you want to take. Phase Two of the project would be doing the Extension of Services Plan, which is the statutory requirement if the city were to go out and do unilateral annexation. It's not a requirement if we have a developer or landowner approach the city requesting annexation. But if the city initiates annexation, then it requires that unilateral process and we follow the statutory process to create the Services Plan. And that Services Plan would include things like, what is the phasing plan? What is the timing of different phases of annexation potentially? And also revisiting Manhattan's existing water and wastewater cost share and extensive extension policies and provide any potential recommended changes to those. So, in that process, that Phase Two process could be extensive. Just a typical unilateral annexation, just a small one, could be up to anywhere from seven to eight months. And that's without doing the extensive Services Plan. So, you know, it could be probably up to a year or more of additional work before you do unilateral annexation. So again, tonight, we're really just talking about the cost-benefit analysis and the results from that analysis. And with that, I'll introduce Julie Herlins, who's going to present.
Thank you, Eric. Good evening, or good late afternoon, I should say. I'm going to take my mask off so you can hear me clearly. It's good to be with you here this evening. As Eric mentioned, my name is Julie Herlins. I'm Vice President with Tischler Bice. We were engaged by the city to do just what Eric mentioned, the Phase One Fiscal Impact Analysis of the Green Valley Annexation Area, potential annexation area. Okay, and to advance this, Eric, are we scrolling? Okay, okay. So I'll provide a little bit of the study overview and how we approach this analysis, really looking at multiple scenarios. I'll talk a little bit about that to kind of, this is a, again, a Phase One and sort of a what-if approach. Talk about some of the key assumptions and then jump right into the fiscal impact results and explain, as we go through, how we're talking about them. And we talk about cumulative fiscal impact results. We've modeled this over a 20-year period. So we're looking at projections over 20 years, and so those are totals over 20 years. We looked at it also on an annual basis, dividing it by type of funds, looking at potential capital impacts, and then also results by these individual sub-areas. And again, we'll get into that as well. Okay, first, the, this is a fiscal impact analysis. A fiscal impact analysis is looking at direct revenues from the land use in the area that we're analyzing, the direct cost, potential costs, those operating impacts and capital impacts. Unlike municipal budgeting, where you have a sum of revenue, you have revenue where you fit those costs into, this is projecting potential revenues from valuations and tax rate assumptions against those operating costs and potential capital needs. And then the question is, is do they meet up at the end? Does one, do the revenues cover those costs? It is also not an economic impact analysis. This is not spin-off jobs and wealth created in the community and incomes in the area, et cetera. This is purely projection and looking at, what are those direct revenues, direct potential costs? We did divide up the area into these four sub-areas, for both to analyze the impacts and to kind of carve up the area in terms of annexation potential. We looked at capital impacts as well, both by needs, the specific needs by sub-area, and then what are those operating impacts off of those capital needs. One key assumption on the capital costs is, are that they, we've assumed a total cost. When a fire station potentially needs to be built, it's the total cost. We're not assuming a debt financing, a debt, you know, debt service schedule over a period of time where there's costs that could happen after that 20-year period. So it's a lump-sum cost and it's a big, a big hit, if you will. And that may not be what ultimately occurs in terms of the financing decisions as you go, as you potentially go forward. All of these assumptions, you got a big document, 100-plus pages. All of those assumptions are in the back of that document, in the appendix, the methodology appendix. I should also say, in terms of the process, we did start this pre-pandemic and then continued on, picked it up at some point in the midst and finishing this up now. So, but we did meet with all city staff, city departments, to really talk about services, what those services would look like in potential annexation area, as well as county staff to talk about growth trends in the part of the county that we're looking at, the economic development potential, and public safety, public safety needs there as well. Okay, I talked about the four sub-areas, and you've seen this in the packet in the map. So when we talk about, and we, in our terminology, we are just calling them fiscal analysis zones. So this is really our term, our word. It doesn't mean anything else beyond that. But really, it's just for us to carve up the area to then do growth projections within those areas and then identify what the revenue potential is and the operating and capital cost needs are within those sub-areas. So what you're looking at here is a summary for all four of those sub-areas combined. And so our approach here is to model, I mentioned, the multiple scenarios. So first, we look at what the existing development in these areas are today. And that's in that first column, existing development of the study area. And we are looking at how the land use is going to drive the need for operating costs, capital costs, and what the revenues are off of those. So this is, so everything that you're looking at is sort of boiled down to the land use piece and then projected into those costs and to revenues. So we looked at three scenarios, and the first is a trend scenario based on what we knew, what we know today. And again, this was starting pre-pandemic. What was known in terms of approved housing units, what the trends were in non-residential development and sort of that absorption. And then we said, we looked at, in consultation with the city, city staff and potential alternatives, the what-ifs. What if there was faster growth in that area? So we bumped it up to a medium-growth scenario. And then what if it was even additional growth beyond that, on that high alternative? Given what we're seeing in terms of housing unit, and we did go back, as we were finalizing this, the report, growth continued through the pandemic. So the housing unit development, residential development continued, non-residential development is also continuing. So the question is, is what if that continues and picks up even beyond the base? And I should say too, if there are any, you know, we can have questions at the end in terms of the numbers. I won't go through specific numbers, unit counts, those kinds of things, but happy to talk through those or get back to you with further detail. So some of the key assumptions, again, everything starting with the land use, looking at current assessed, appraised values, and then converting them to assessed values based on those percentages. Other key factors are household sizes, how many persons on average are going to potentially be residing in those units or in the future, so that we want to talk about what kind of population-driven needs there are. Vehicle trips we use as well in terms of the impact on road system and also on the public safety side as well. And on the retail, on the non-residential side, same thing, valuations, how many jobs located within those different types of land uses, vehicle trips, et cetera. So these are all some of the factors that go into the modeling, the modeling assumptions on the front end. Again, mentioned about our starting point, pre-pandemic. But I should note too here that while our assumptions held, all of those assumptions, pre-pandemic held, so both on the revenue side and the cost side. So those, so we were consistent all the way through, and what we're really looking for is the relationship between the two, the revenues and the expenditures, as I mentioned. So getting right into the, to the bottom line, to the results. So what you're looking at here is the fiscal impact results for all four of those sub-areas combined. So fiscal area, fiscal analysis zones, one, two, and three, all combined, what if all four were annexed? Again, this is a cumulative total. So this is a 20-year total comparison of revenues, potential revenues generated, potential expenditures generated, and that net fiscal impact. The, it also does include, I should note, that base year development, the current development that's in the ground today. But it does not include current city revenues and expenditures. So this is just for that, those areas, the four areas combined. So on Scenario One, that trend scenario, we have a net fiscal impact of about over 20 years, about $5 million in total, so almost sort of a break-even type scenario. That second scenario, on the medium-growth scenario, slightly higher, at $14 million. At the third scenario, on the high-growth, 18 million. And in further detail, just to kind of, this is the same information, just giving the dollars all the way through. And what's not shown here, if you wanted to get a sense of an annual average, it's, you know, a straight kind of dividing by 20. We got a 20-year total. The first one is about a quarter of a million dollars, $250,000 a year, about, you know, less than 1% of the current budget. As we go up, it's about, we get to about $1 million per year on an average annual basis. I should also say, there's an asterisk and note here, that utility costs are not included here within these results. And we will get into this in actually the next slide, but it's general funds, special revenue funds, and capital improvements. We do have a discussion on the utility costs, and I will get to that. But these results do not include utility costs embedded in the results. I mentioned also, another way to think about and to look at the results is on annual, on an annual basis. This is in each year, revenues generated, potentially projected on each of these scenarios, compared to the cost generated. We're not carrying, we're not carrying those revenues over from year to year. It's just straight in that year with the development that we're assuming on each of these scenarios, what does that look like in terms of the relationship between the revenues and the costs? And you'll see here, we have some notations on some of those capital expenditures and then the, and then the accompanying operating impacts where there's a net deficit in that particular year. So those dips. So it's sort of lumpy, and we are modeling this on a marginal basis and getting to a point, a threshold where we say, okay, you need to build a fire station, in this case, or parks, capital improvements, and then a net deficit does occur in those, in those years. So this gives a sense of sort of this kind of a potential foreshadowing. Again, this is all four sub-areas of a service plan. What would that look like year-over-year basis is, as Eric mentioned, much more detail, much more work to go into that, more specifics, but this is where that Phase Two could potentially go if you were to look at year-over-year basis of those needs. I mentioned the multiple, the scenarios, I mean, the, excuse me, the funds included. So we do have, and again, much more detail in the methodology appendix and also at the back of this presentation in terms of those specifics, you know, the individual line item funds within the special revenue funds in particular. But the general fund is the, you know, the included in its entirety, the special revenue funds, again, the comparing revenues and expenditures on each, and then this breakdown. But that bottom line is where, again, where we ended up on those other, on those other slides, the $5 million on the trend, 13, about 14 million on the, on the medium scenario, and about 19, or close to about 18 and a half on the, on the high-growth scenario. And also I should note too, I just, on the special revenue funds, that is where the sales tax fund is located within that, within that subgroup. So I mentioned, we look at both operating and capital. This is a snapshot of, again, cumulative 20-year costs of those capital impacts. So the, so the full, again, pay-go, not assuming debt financing, so no interest costs included in here, but what that would look like by scenario, for, again, all four of those scenarios, what does that look like in terms of the capital needs projected? And then some further detail, again, happy to answer specific questions about any of the information. But the model does, at this point, we do get down to how many acres of parks based on current levels of service. If you were to maintain your same level of service from, within the city for fire services, for other services, what would that look like in terms of those capital needs in these, again, the four areas combined? Again, Phase Two, much more detail about the specific services, the capital facilities. This is a projection based on what we know today, what's provided today, and the level of services provided, both in the city and the demand for services in the potential annexation areas. I mentioned utility costs. So typically, in a fiscal impact analysis, the assumption on enterprise funds is that rates and fees, rates and fees will be set to a level to cover the expenditures, whether they're from, well, that they'll be set to cover those expenditures. What we did do as part of this analysis is an off-model projection on the costs, potential costs. The assumption here, though, is that these costs would be covered through rates and fees within, within an enterprise fund structure. So again, they're not folded into the bottom-line results, but we do have a projection and assumption on the level of both operating and capital for water, wastewater, and stormwater, based on known plans, known capital improvement, known needs, and what currently is provided today.
Julie, this is Commissioner Reddy. Could you go back to your previous slide?
Hopefully, yes.
So when you look at streets and you have the four zones, capital improvements, and your three scenarios, the assigned amount for Scenario One, Two, and Three for streets seems to be all the same. If the projection is that in Scenario Two and Scenario Three, it's going to grow even more, wouldn't those projected costs also be more?
Right, so for, thank you for that question. The, on the capital side, these are city, city, system-level, city-responsible infrastructure, so collectors and arterials. So local roads, so the assumption is, is the network would be the same, essentially. And any local roads that would be needed for additional residential would be the developer's responsibility. So those would be built by private funds, private sector, and ultimately taken over by, by the city and adopted into the system. So the operating costs would increase and would be different, there would be a differential with more growth. However, the system itself would, would be built, you know, built to a, to the level that would be needed to serve that area regardless of that, that incremental amount of additional growth.
So the expectation or the assumption is that the developers will pick up the residential portion or whatever it is they're building?
Correct, the local streets. So the, yeah, so sort of that, the internal streets to a development, to a subdivision would be built as part of the development itself.
Would that be the developer or special assessment taxes?
Well, and, well, that would be, however I will defer to.
It could be either.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because in the, in Zone Four, according to some of the material that was given to us, Zone Four was going to be primarily residential, whereas Zones One, Two, and Three, there was more commercial, industrial, retail business.
Correct.
But the projected improvements seem to be the same for all four zones, in fact.
Well, and this is the grand total for all four combined. So when we look at the results for fiscal zones One, Two, and Three, without that fourth area, it's much less. The capital impacts are much, much less than that total, as I recall.
Okay, I understand it. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Well, that's a good question. Okay, yes, so going on to, yeah, okay, that works, okay. Speaking of the fiscal zone Three, One, Two, and Three without four. So one of the other, one of the questions we had as we were going through this, once we kind of saw the results and thinking about the type of growth and the, and the potential for annexation, is what would it look like, what would the results look like if we were to exclude fiscal Zone Four and just look at One, Two, and Three? So same series of, or generally the same series of charts. This is the cumulative impact, again, the 20-year time period, revenues in the blue, expenditures in the, in the orange, and the gray showing the net fiscal result. So this is just the sum total of fiscal zones One, Two, and Three. And so for Scenario One, our trend scenario, we're about at a fiscal surplus of 19 million over the 20 years, so a little less than a million bucks a year. For Scenario Two, a 22, about a $22 million net fiscal surplus. And in Scenario Three, about 24, 23.5 million cumulative total. So again, around a million, million, a little over a million in each year if we were to look at an average annual basis. And then, again, just more detail, the same figures for fiscal, fiscal One, Two, and Three, to accompanying the previous chart. The, yeah, so in these three scenarios, the general fund generates surpluses in each and sufficient revenue to cover those, the capital needs. I'm going to go on to fiscal results by sub-area and just kind of touch on this a little bit, if that's, if that's okay. And then the, I'll leave the, end with the key findings and we can, if there's further detail on the, on the real, the real detailed figures, we can get into that as well. You mentioned, Chair, about the, about the differences between the fiscal zones. So fiscal Zone Four is predominantly residential. One, Two, and Three are predominantly non-residential, and this is kind of that breakdown with, within each. So just looking at residential units for Scenario One, that very top line, about 1,600 units, again, this, over, for our trend scenario, compared to about 32 units of residential development in the other two fiscal zones. So predominantly residential in that scenario, in that fiscal Four. And then, again, Scenario Two and Three build off of that trend scenario. So this is, what you're looking at here is results in a little bit a different way, but just the net fiscal impact. So we're not showing revenues and expenditures separately here. But this is, each bar are the results for, for the fiscal zones themselves. So as we were talking about, fiscal Zone Four, predominantly residential, is generating, we've generated and projected a fiscal deficit. So any, any bar below that zero line in the red is a net fiscal deficit projected over the 20-year period. Fiscal zones One, Two, and Three all generate net fiscal positives, with Two generating the greater of the two areas. And that's consistent all the way in each of these scenarios. Again, I won't go through in terrible detail unless there's, and there's questions, but this is just for, so further, further detail. But again, the, the, the color that stands out is the net fiscal deficit in the red there in fiscal Zone Four on each of our scenarios. So this is Scenario One. And again, this breakdown of revenues by fund, expenditures by fund, and net fiscal impacts in total in that bottom part of the, of the chart, of the table. So this is Scenario One, and we go to Scenario Two, same patterns all the way through, and Scenario Three.
I do have a question, Commissioner Amada. When you're looking at those individual scenarios, which you just do this one or you just do these two, because the one thing I always think about was the fire station. And I did find, back on page 112, that if you did one alone, you wouldn't require it. Two or three alone, you would, but if you did two or three, you needed to do the fire station. So how did you take the fire station into account when you were doing these individual scenarios?
Right, the, it's prorated between the two, so the, as you said, it fits.
So it would never be worse, possibly better, if we only did one of those scenarios that didn't require one?
Correct, correct, yes.
For a second here. So on the, earlier, you said that the big bump in special revenue funds was sales tax. With FAS number four, what is the big boost there? Is that just property tax on all those houses?
Yeah, so in the special revenue fund, it has a sales tax fund and the Riley County, Riley County Special Fund, Revenue Fund, that does have a property tax included in it as well. So the lion's share in there is property tax. There's both sales tax fund and the property tax for Riley County.
Okay.
Yep. And then finally, I'll just conclude with this slide again. I do have more detail toward the back of this presentation, which is really meant as supporting documentation and kind of more, if there are questions about some of the findings. and kind of more, if there are questions about some of the findings. But as we've said, looking at the funds and combining, in total, when you combine fiscal zones one, two, three and four, it's a net positive. Combining one, two and three, also a net positive. And again, this is projecting revenues from our assumptions as outlined and the operating costs and capital needs as we've outlined in those assumptions. Any changes to either of those two may change the ultimate, you know, the end point, but as, based on current level of service, based on the assumptions on those services and capital needs and the revenues that we've projected, there is a net fiscal positive. The fiscal zone four, we've talked about, alone generates those negative fiscal results in all the scenarios across the board. The scenario three with the largest amount of growth does generate the largest relative fiscal positive of the three scenarios. I mentioned before, I just want to just highlight, utility costs are not included in any of the total numbers except for when we talk about them in, when we separate them out and talk about them separately. And also, your question about special assessment districts and other tools, those are not included at this point in time, tax increment financing, community improvement districts, et cetera, those types of tools and mechanisms are not included at this point. This is just straight city revenues and rates. I also should mention too, I don't have it here, but this is a fiscal impact study. We have not considered other elements, other factors, other criteria, social, environmental, et cetera. This is purely a fiscal impact analysis. You know, comp plans and other planning efforts will broaden that and provide a holistic approach. So I would be remiss if I didn't mention that. We, me personally and my company, we always just talk about fiscal impact analysis because that's what we do, and I just want to make sure that, you know, put that on record and make sure to note that this is really one piece of a much larger, much larger discussion to be had.
So Julie, I know we're going to get deeper into this, but all of these are based on 2018, and since then lots has changed, inflation and everything else. So at what percent, if we were to extrapolate, would we look at to bring it to 2022 numbers?
Right. So the, our assumption and premise is that we are looking at the relationships, and so that if, you know, as assessed values have increased, and potentially tax rates have decreased commensurately, or, you know, whatever the relationship there to maintain sort of the relationship between your current budgeting, budget with the revenues and expenditures, that that would continue. So the relationships, you know, at the foundational should, relationship between the revenues and expenditures that we've projected should hold. Now, there may be some differences in terms of, you know, if there was an increase in levels of service, or, you know, some investment, or with the, you know, kind of, you know, addressing pandemic needs, that may have shifted it slightly. But, so I don't have an answer to that question directly in terms of the percentage change, but the assumption is, and we have been engaged in, we work nationally, we do this, you know, lots of different places, finding that, that those relationships do hold, even when we go back in and update to, you know, latest, you know, the current, to fiscal 22, or to fiscal, you know, to the next budget year, that the relationships are holding despite, you know, pandemic kind of effects, if you will.
So you're saying that, let's say if we increased expenditures to 4%, then the revenue, you're expecting that to be the same at, do both at the 4%? Or is that what, is that what you mean?
Well, if, are you saying the revenue, the expenditures increasing 4% current city, for existing city needs currently, your current city budget?
And inflation, if you take all that into account, because labor, construction, all of these things are very different now for expenditures as opposed to revenue.
Right.
So I'm just trying to figure out what that looks like.
Right. The, if, you know, the assumption would be that the same time you would need those revenues to cover those expenditures as well. So you've found those revenues through either increase in rates, or the valuations have increased, your property tax revenues have increased, or sales taxes have increased, or, you know, sales tax revenue has increased commensurately to allow for that coverage, unless, you know, or in some cases, there might be some things that you're not, that haven't, that aren't funding, or that are decreasing level of service. So that would also be reflected in what you would do in this area in the future as well. Kind of current levels of service, so maintaining that same, those same levels. So if you've increased, you know, if expenditures have increased in one area and held steady or decreased in others because you didn't have the revenues to do it, that would be this assumption we would take forward into a new area, you know, services in a new area.
So this is just all things being the same and equal is what you're projecting? So we have to look into our internal expenditures and revenues and then project it onto this one?
Correct. Right. The starting point is the current, your city's current level of service, in that you would provide those same levels of service to an annexed area. And the rates, and the revenue side, the rates, fees, charges would hold as well within the annexed area as well.
So with the zones two and three that would require a new fire station, I'm not sure where you can get a fire station built for $2.5 million, but that's a nice optimistic number to shoot for. Does that, does it include the 18 to 20 firefighters, depending on whether you have four or five stationed there? Is that expense figured into?
On the operating side. So it's not within that capital number, but it's folded into the operating side. And then it triggers, once it's built, it's an annual expenditure from that point on.
That's already there.
Yep.
The, looking at the, your line graph, whatever page it is, that's got the yearly, it looks like basically for the first 10 years, it's a break even thing, best case scenario, and we don't really make most of the money till the 10 to 12 years, 10 to 20 years out. If I try to follow the trend line, it's bobbing up and down over the zero until you get to year 11, then suddenly everything becomes profitable. Is that more or less accurate?
Correct. And again, this is for, the four subareas together. The, this graphic, I believe is in the report, we can get back to you specifically for areas one, two and three, which would look differently, do look different.
Okay, so it's, if we took out FAS number four, that graph would be totally different?
Correct.
Okay.
So I think the other, and Julie, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner, is that, again, that cost is, here is considered a one-time cash payment as opposed to, we may very well, most of our fire stations we've built, we've debt serviced over multiple years. So you, if you did that, that cost would be spread and you wouldn't have that big dip.
Right there, okay.
You would have a dip from hiring all the firefighters.
Right.
But it wouldn't be as, it wouldn't be as steep.
Right, exactly.
Same is true for the fire trucks. We tend to lease purchase our fire trucks.
Okay.
Right.
All right, so that's, thank you.
I want to ask about the rise in property values.
Oh, your, your mic, I think.
About the rise in property values? And they're not really factored in here, except as they relate to property valuation increases, is that right?
So the approach is to model everything today, 20 years, at current dollars as a snapshot. So we don't have to make those assumptions about inflation on costs, on labor, materials, et cetera, and assumptions on appreciation in property values. There's a ton of unknowns in that regard, right? So, and at the same time, then tax rates would be changing as well as valuations change. And so the approach is to today, snapshot in time, levels of service that are funded with the, with the current rates and fees, what are those services that are provided today, and what would that look like in the future? So we do not have, we're, we are modeling property tax revenues from the growth, but not from increases in valuations.
Because we just had a newspaper article that property values in homes in Riley County are projected to go up, I think, 10 to 14%. And I don't know that information for Potawatomi County. But that's a significant rise. So that's in actual property values. Thank you.
I've got a question, I don't know if you can answer it, or maybe Eric or Rob. When I look at the numbers, this would all just be in one, two, three, because they have all the industrial, we've got, on the number one trend, we've got retail, square foot tripling, office maybe 50% up, industrial doubling and institutional tripling. If we were to annex those three, how much are we able to pace our costs depending on what the growth really is? So, you know, that's the thing that concerns me, do we hit those numbers, not hit those numbers, how much fixed investment we have regardless? I realize we hit some point whether we have to do the fire station or not.
Right, no, and I think that's a, that's a great question. So it would be dependent on owners and developers' willingness to make those modifications for either higher density or growth provisions. You know, I think if you look at the heritage area, where we provided city-level services of water, sewer, roadways, with those kind of lot development, you saw how rapidly, certainly the south side and starting to see it on the north side, that that started to fill in because those services were there. Most of that area, prior to us putting in the water line, are fed by a two-inch plastic water line through the rural water district. So that really limits a business's ability to do much there, if they're wanting to invest significant dollars for whatever commercial activity that they're wanting to do there. So that's, it really would be, I mean, dependent, and that's why I think that trend analysis is, doesn't include heritage, or does it? So it wouldn't, it wouldn't have that aspect of that particular level of growth. Now, that, some of the area of the, for example, in the current industrial park of Green Valley has higher level infrastructure, so it has developed more for that. So it's kind of just modeling some of the annual data in, that has been the trend for that particular area. I think the assumptions in the scenarios two and three would be that if we did provide a higher level of capability with infrastructure, that developers would likely take advantage of some of that infrastructure being available to also provide a higher level of commercial activity.
But you're saying you have the big lines out there, the big connections, you wouldn't really do that detail, smaller development until you actually had someone who told you how they wanted to use it, because you don't know how to set it up necessarily.
And since there isn't a lot of undeveloped land, it's likely going to be a redevelopment. So somebody's going to want to redevelop that property into a more intense use. They might add, through that additional infrastructure, they would be able to likely add additional lots, separate up their lots and additional businesses within that footprint, or they may decide to level that particular site, depending on the situation, and then redevelop. So it's probably going to be a little bit slower, because redevelopment typically takes a little bit longer.
What was the, what's the assumption on police coverage? Is RCPD would go as far as the city limits go, or?
Yes. So the police, the RCPD is a city police force, they would provide service within whatever area was annexed. I think generally speaking, as I recall, the increase was for additional officers and patrol vehicles, not any physical amenities. But it did increase patrol cars and I think at least one additional officer per shift.
Okay.
With your presentation.
Yeah, sorry.
We weren't sure.
Yep. An end there.
I wanted to, I looked at the capital costs for transportation, and I know some of that is five to 10 years out. I'm on page 111.
Okay.
Some of them seem, well, they would, these would not happen quickly, it would appear.
Right, so that if you figure 38 on that same page, that's the timing that we've assumed for these, for these, taking the totals and the dollar amounts and...
Dollar amount.
Yep, and putting them into timing.
But most of those seem to be in area one. I guess one, two and three, so they aren't broken out.
The, that 38, you'll see the fiscal four has about 10 million, 10.7 million of the 14.5. So that, so the dollar figure there, the dollar amount there is the lion's share, is in fiscal four, fiscal zone four.
So our PowerPoint had a few more slides, but this is, this is the stopping point, right?
There are more slides toward the end, and they're really meant as, if there are further questions and kind of more supporting detail. I'm happy to continue on and kind of tick through what you're, what is in there. It is quite, quite detailed, which is, I'm here, you want me to, no?
Ron, I wanted to ask about the Economic Development Fund that we have.
Okay.
If we were to, would that, would we, are we able, like, the first one was MetaFab, and it was in the city limits. So as long as, if we annexed, that would be in the city limits, we could use those funds. Is there anything tying up the more recent Economic Development Fund?
Yeah, so the, you're correct on the MetaFab, and I think we have about a million dollars left in that particular fund, which we could use anywhere in the city, regardless of the county. The more recent funds do have a stipulation that if we're going to spend them outside of Riley County, we do have to get the county commission's permission, Riley County commission's permission to do so.
Okay.
The new sales tax fund, which will start a year from now, in January of '23, is also a citywide sales tax fund. So it would be available to utilize wherever we wanted to in the city and either county.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate that.
So Ron, you said we got an 18-inch water main, which seems oversized. Do we have an equally oversized sewer main, so there wouldn't be a lot of extra upsizing of sewer stuff to accept and handle all this, whatever sewage is expected with these scenarios?
Sure, so that would be something we'd look at closer in a more detailed services study. But generally speaking, we've actually had the sewer district in place. So we provide wholesale treatment to the Green Valley Sewer District, which is on one of the maps in the report, that shows the growth area for that, as well as the actual sewer district area. And I think we're using the 2019 boundary for that, and it's expanded some since then from subdivision growth. All of that infrastructure was sized to be able to handle that growth area, so it flows to a big pump station on South XL Road, and then is a large force main that goes along the railroad to our wastewater treatment plant. There's a smaller pump station that's right just east of Heritage, or excuse me, west of Heritage, in that first zone, that are our direct sewer customers that are, have a separate force main to the treatment plant. So the basic sewer infrastructure that exists is in pretty good shape. There are some areas of the older development that would have to be analyzed for... There are some areas of the older development that would have to be analyzed for sizing and whether or not any of that was shared for growth or not. And so I think generally speaking, you're certainly comfortable with the sanitary sewer. What would come into play would be as areas were to redevelop, and then you would probably have to put in additional infrastructure. Typically, when we've done something like that, we've formed a benefit district, and the benefiting properties are the ones that participate. And that's the way Heritage was built. The city didn't participate in anything at large there unless we did some oversizing. Typically, we would participate in oversizing for some of that, that transmission. On the water side, we have a, a large transmission main, as you indicated, and that goes all the way to XL Road, mostly on the north side of the road, but somewhat on the south side as well. And then it goes up XL Road for about a quarter mile or so, and there's a pump station there. We contract with the Rural Water District in providing services. We also contract with Potawatomi County to operate the pump stations. And then that provides service to the million-gallon water tank that is currently owned and operated by the Rural Water District. So that infrastructure is in good shape. There would be, and, and a lot of the water lines that are in the residential area are adequate, as well as the, the business park, the newer areas, size-wise and probably condition-wise. We do know that there, you know, I'm gonna switch back to sewer on you, because it just popped into my mind. We do know there's some infiltration issues in, in the sewer system, because we see that at the plant with, when you have rain events. So, you know, there's likely some maintenance that needs to be done on that line with linings and, and that sort of thing. So the, back on the water lines, most of the system in the, there, there's two water systems, and then there's probably several private water systems as well. But most of the commercial, one of the things that exists there is the, that was designed to be a fill, fill truck system. So if you're the fire, the volunteer fire service, they have pumper trucks that they pump the water through to get the pressure they need. With the million-gallon water tank that's been constructed, some of the, that area could easily be converted to a pressurized system, which would certainly benefit in the firefight. So a lot of that hasn't been analyzed yet as far as what those provisions are. But generally speaking, again, as an, as an area would, would, would redevelop or develop, we would extend those services and, and either in a benefit district or the developer could pay that cost.
Could you, Julie, could you go back to the, the map with the four areas on it? I don't, I know where, how did you, everybody decide to, how far east that went? Is, that's past, I can't, is that, it's past Lake Elbow to, is there another street there? Or what was, what was the point of going there as opposed to stopping?
As I recall, I don't know, do you have the, do you have the, it's the sewer, sewer service area map? That generally is the document that was utilized to, to be able to.
Well, because I know like the area west of the Lake Elbow turnoff is, whenever it rains, there's water there for like a month. So some of that area is, is pretty fairly unusable these days for, for development, based on the fact that it's so low and, and water sits on the north side there. So I was curious as to, yeah, I don't know how much fill they'd have to make in order to, they're already having to build up the XL Road corner five or six feet, I think last I heard, to make that a suitable potential business park or so. And if you're gonna have to fill in six feet of dirt a mile to the east, that's, that's, I'm curious as to what, yeah, if, if that's actually gonna be usable for something other than wetlands farther east there.
Sure, and that's, that's something that can be analyzed in, in the future. This is the map that I was referring to. The blue line is the original sewer service study area boundary. I'm pretty sure that was established by Potawatomi County when they did the original analysis. And then the red line is where the build-out has been on the actual sewer system itself. And, you know, pretty much Potawatomi County has been requiring sizing of, and materials to be similar to what we would require. So I don't think that's a particular issue. It's the older areas where some of the, some of the sizing is undersized. We know that there's some four-inch water lines in some places. Again, most of that US 24 corridor is only serviced by, by the Rural Water District with a two-inch plastic line.
Yeah, okay.
So Commissioner, to answer your question, the, the blue line that you see here primarily north of US 24 is the same boundary that you see on fiscal area four. It, it matches that sewer district study area boundary. Whoops. There, this, this blue line is the same line.
Okay. All right, thanks.
So this is Commissioner ready. I, did you have a question?
Go ahead.
Okay. One of the reasons we prompted this study in 2018 was when Commissioner Dodson was still here. And at that time, I think there was a discussion about making that a city or incorporated city and all of this. So all of those discussions were happening. And then we know there was lots of conversations about annexation for decades. And he recommended, let's, let's just see what the fiscal impact is and give options for people to look at. So not, not so much as this is what we're gonna do, but just look at options that were out there. And that, that finally we're here to see it. I, I wish he was here to see it as well, because he, I think he was mayor at the time when he asked for this. It's good to see all of this as presented. And so if Heritage Square is an annex, island annexation, if there was no annexation by the city, can other business districts and such ask for a, a, a annexation island like they did?
Yes, they, they can do that. As we indicated, I think Julie indicated, that really only area one is contiguous to the city's primary boundary. So it could be annexed at any time. We also, since we've built the, the water line, we've had several direct customers that have wanted that advantage and have agreed to annexation agreements as a, as a part of that. So those would also be part of, if they weren't part of a larger annexation package, they could request to be annexed as well through an island annexation. The county commission is, is very much involved in that process as well, through a, a public hearing process. And Eric indicated that that's different than if you have a individual landowner that requests that annexation. And, and our annexation is always discretionary by the governing body. But once you annex it, you're required to serve it. So that's the key difference there. And so a part of that analysis from that request would be, do we have the ability to serve it?
And, and that's what stopped us many times because of the expenditure on our end and the services we would have to provide, as well as just the labor, staffing, RCPD, fire, all of these discussions that we're having, having now were some of the reasons that why it wasn't done in the past, but just to look at options for the future as we, as we are growing in all directions and trying to find more space. I think one of the things, it's good to understand their population growth and their commercial district and options for retail and office space and such, but also the, the impact it would have on just our city functions and how many years that would take. Even if there was an annexation movement, probably wouldn't happen for at least, I would say, five to 10 years for all of that to take place. And I, I'm not sure the numbers are accurate, because it says it's considered for zero rate of inflation. And I looked at all the, the cars, the traffic, the use of how many fire calls they get and all of these things. So I think there's more conversations to be had, but I, I believe the options are there should, should specific areas want to be annexed. And in the future, it may end up being, as we discussed it, with all the communities involved to see what would be the best, would be in the best interest, not only of the city, but all those residents. We already have a school district there, and that's growing exponentially as well. But I think, I don't know. Also from RCPD, their budget is constantly increasing. That comes from property taxes as well, so that would be a huge impact on this too. So I think there's just a lot more information we're gonna need if, if we decide to do further, go into phase two or anything like that.
I wanted to ask, are there any, does the city serve any properties with water and sewer service that are outside of this annexation study area? Or is every, are we considering everything?
Yeah, I don't believe so.
Okay.
So the, the city, other than that, the infrastructure in Heritage and Area One is our only owned sanitary sewer. Every, the sewer district owns all other infrastructure.
Okay.
From a sewer perspective, and it's basically based on what that area can collect. And then on the water, the Rural Water District is the primary provider. Potawatomi County in the, some of the older areas has a small water district as well. And then there, I'm sure there are some individual wells that, that owners have that supply their needs. But yeah, I'm, I don't believe, most of our direct customers would be near our water line that runs along 24 and up XL.
So the map that we have with the red and the blue, the red line, the red lines have a lot of just excluded areas.
I would say they have undeveloped areas.
Undeveloped?
There, there's a lot of residential subdivisions that have been developed within that boundary that still has a lot of farmland in between them.
All right. I drove the area. That's why I wanted a, a better map with streets, because I was, needed that to, I drove on Sunday the whole area. And I'm, I was surprised at the expansion of subdivisions to the north and east. And I wanted to ask about the million-gallon water tower. We have on our CIP, a million-gallon water tower for the northwest part of Manhattan coming up. I don't know when. But are, is that million-gallon water tower sufficient for how long a period if, serving? Because this area is really growing and, but it's the water district that owns it, granted, but I just wondered about capacity.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I don't have those numbers committed. I don't see any of my utilities folks. So I, pardon? Rob's there. Yeah. Rob, you prepared to?
He's the chief utility.
To answer that one, but I, you know, originally they were gonna build a quarter-million gallon tank and, and they recognized that the growth was occurring. That, even though we don't own that, we have an agreement for service
Right.
with the Rural Water District, and that benefits us as well if we had a large fire downtown or somewhere in the city and, and we were using a lot of water. We could backfeed that water to help us with our system as well. So I, I don't know, Rob, if you knew what the projection was for that. It takes a, a lot of residential homes to, and as well as a high commercial water user, to, to pull off that million-gallon tank.
Mayor, Commissioners, Rob, Director of Public Works, Ron's correct. The one-million-gallon water tank is larger than anything we have today in our system. I can go back, take a look at the basis of design numbers. I don't have those committed to memory.
That's all right. Your general feeling about it.
There, there certainly is capacity in there. In fact, Randy analyzes every year. There's, in part of the provisions of the agreement in terms of how much, I think it's 100,000 gallons increments they have to purchase as their basis. But I can look that up for you, but it's larger than anything we have in our system right now.
My, my main question, that's why I lay the groundwork, but my, my question is, if another water tower is needed in this area, will it be the water district that will build it? Or will the city of Manhattan have to build it?
So in a services plan,
Right.
that's part of what we would address.
Phase two?
So would we address, are we going to take over any of your system? And what are the provisions of that arrangement? So if we were going to invest, you know, so if they've made investments and have, have owed debt on it, they're probably going to negotiate for us to either take over that debt and maybe some principal towards its, its provision. Assuming it's to our standards, you know, we're probably not gonna have a, a big issue with that, depending on how, how the source of the revenue is that's paying that system off. On the sewer side, all of those, we have, we have master agreements in place for, for that. Kind of jumping back to the water line. I'm sure the Rural Water District would be happy to get rid of that two-inch line that they, breaks a lot and that they have to repair. It's not adequate for that area. And that's not an area that their typical rural, rural water districts aren't in business of, of providing that service. So those are negotiated provisions within that services plan. And that would be the same for the sewer district as well, whether or not some portion of the sewer district would be acquired or transferred, depending on those arrangements. But that's the, that's why sometimes the sewer, the services plan takes longer to do, because you have these existing arrangements, you have existing infrastructure, and you assess the condition of that existing infrastructure, whether or not it needs to be improved or whether it's adequate, and then who's gonna provide those services.
That's what I wondered, if you'd be meeting with the water district or have already about the future. The other was that in the residential area and even some of the commercial, that infrastructure is pretty old. That development has been there over at least 50 years. I don't know. I'm just trying to figure out if we would need to be replacing some of that. And it sounds like you, you indicated that it's in pretty good shape still.
Well, I was speaking to the Green Valley Business Park area. So the, the area that would be to the east of Green Valley Road and, and north of US 24, that's relatively within the last 35 years, most of it. So that, that infrastructure from, from, for the most part is fairly young. But we do know, as I indicated, there are some of the residential and the sewer system where we know we have INI or infiltration in storm. So that's very prevalent. We see it at the, at the wastewater plant when it happens. And so, and it's to that district's benefit to correct those things, because they're paying us for the quantity of material that's going through that pipe to our plant. So it's metered. And so we wanna maintain that capacity, and, and we've relined some of our older lines so that we get several more decades' use out of it. So those are the assessments. We haven't done any camera assessments. We assist the district with our camera when they have needs. And so that, those are all some of the analysis that would take, take place in a more detailed services plan in phase two.
Does this area that we're considering annexing one, two, and three, do they have stormwater standards now?
I believe Pott County has adopted some recent stormwater standard. I'm not advert, I'm not, I can't explain that to you. Rob may know some of those provisions. But the stormwater cost, if you saw that on the table, was pretty high. And, and so there are, I know there are a lot of stormwater needs. I know that the county has done some stormwater analysis and what some of those costs are for some of those improvements. So I would assume, I mean, we'd wanna analyze what they've, what they've recommended and, and concur or develop additional meeting provisions.
That would be in phase two as part of the infrastructure.
Yes.
Because Manhattan has a lot of experience being at the drain and the bathtub. And this area seems to be the low end of that area too.
Yeah, they're along the river valley as well.
Yeah, exactly.
So everything drains downhill. Rob, you got anything to add to that?
Just, just a couple of little things to add.
Please.
Commissioner, on the water tower, remember, if I remember, I'll verify, but I seem to remember in the basis of design in terms of the size of the water tower, it's not only just domestic drinking water or. just domestic drinking water or water for restaurants and so forth, but also for fire pressure and fire flow, so that it could meet current standards of the fire department. But I'll verify that. Ron's absolutely right about the sanitary sewer, the lift station that's in Blue Township has a meter, and we see at a minimum, when there's a rain event, at least a 3X increase in normal flows. So, there, now, we have a leaky system in parts of our community as well, so I don't wanna, you know, make it sound like we don't have, we live in a glass house, too. But there's certainly, Ron's right, we have the data to show that. Commissioner House, what were you gonna ask?
Yeah, the, but the only people paying us a stormwater fee now are the people that are on the city, the annexed, island annexation city water users.
Right now.
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
But we're talking about the future and the stormwater improvements we would have to make.
Yep. I don't know what standards Pot County's adopted for stormwater. What I do know is they did have a master plan developed, I think you have some county commissioner, you can ask her what her policy is if she gets up tonight.
I imagine you'll be getting, digging into it deep as you proceed.
Depending upon the direction received tonight, we could get into a lot of things, into the weeds, so we'll see where this goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Rob, I appreciate it. This study is concluded. What is the estimate for the next, the cost for the next phase? Do we have one?
I don't know that we have asked for a price for that, a lot of that will depend on, there is consultant work that could be done, there's, there's staff work that can be done, more than likely, there was a lot of staff time in this one as well. Like I said, some information, we have more information on than others in assessing that, but that would be part of that services phase, and we can certainly come back to you and provide you, again, if it's, how big of, is it all four areas, is it one, is it one and two, is it one, two, and three, that type of thing. So, that'll be dependent on what that scope might be. But it, it is typically more time-consuming and in-depth, because you need to do more physical analysis in the field.
It's more expensive, yeah. Okay.
So, what do you want from us now?
So, you might wanna take some comments, but at, at some point, we'd like, like to kinda know, do we want to, are we interested in going into further analysis on the phases? Obviously, we have had folks that have had requested services, so, you know, that would help us to at least get to potential scope and, and some of that cost for that phase two services study. We just need to, I don't, we don't necessarily need to know the details at, at this point, but concurrence to, to move forward or not, knowing that we also have had some interest and could get a request, you know, for, for annexation, depending on the, the nature of, of different aspects. We have had inquiries along the corridor, 24 corridor, for additional services, much similar to a heritage-type development as far as in, ability to increase density and have fire flows and all of those things. Right now, the Heritage area was, was undeveloped at the time, so it was, it was a little easier developed from that standpoint, but it was also kind of a marker for us to how we've, how comfortable we felt being able to get adequate fire response in the standard time. Beyond that, it's more difficult to get a standard fire response without building additional or relocating stations. So, those are some of those aspects, too.
And I think the potential to redevelop some of the existing properties there that have a lot of land, they might be interested in, you know, what, subdividing, I guess is a good word, some of those areas.
There are, and, and I know, you know, hats off to Potawatomi County, they've done a lot of transportation planning in that, that area, and they are working on a series of reverse frontage roads, which, you know, one of the challenges you have where you have a, a high-volume roadway, much like what we're doing out in the North Campus Corridor, we're trying to eliminate those direct accesses onto that heavy-flow traffic street and create reverse frontage roads for that. Those type of developments and improvements in the transportation infrastructure can also lead to further redevelopment based on those situations. But, again, you have to have willing participants that wanna do that.
Yeah. If we were to annex there on both sides of Highway 24, how much responsibility would we have for transportation? Will that continue to be KDOT?
Yes, from our perspective, that's, that's, one of the earlier versions had assigned all of the cost of improvement to 24 to the city. That didn't have those results. And, and generally speaking, both, both the county and us have not done major improvements to state highways without significant participation by the state DOT in helping to fund those. And the maintenance cost is the huge one as well. So, bridges are very expensive to, to maintain and replace, those are, there's, there's bridges on, on that corridor that are actually adjacent to Area One. So, we would be involved in that, just like we are with, with state highway projects, whether it's Seth Child or Tuttle Creek Boulevard or US 24 or Fort Riley Boulevard, all of those are ones that we cost-share on today. With KDOT, some of those, Fort Riley Boulevard is a, is a kind of a 50/50 cost-share, and then the rest of the state highways are pretty much 100% KDOT for maintenance. So, those are key considerations as well.
As I look at that area, one of the disadvantages is the traffic on Highway 24 and the patience you'd have to have to, to.
And, and as I recall, most of the improvements that are outlined on page 111 on those capital costs in the transportation sector are all, all projects that have been, are at least in some kind of planning stage, either by Potawatomi County or the Metropolitan Planning Organization with regard to various improvements in capacity along that corridor, as well as safety improvements. And I applaud them for the reverse frontage roads that they're developing. I think that's a, increasing, and the capacity at the intersections with turning lanes, all of those are key, key improvements that certainly will, will help manage some of that growth. And that, you know, they're.
I think Mark had a good question with regard to that low-lying area there on the east end of this annexation area, around XL and even on the south side of Highway 24. It seems that every, every property that develops there has to have five foot, is what you said, of infill. Does that require any special permissions to raise the level that much? Or do you just?
So, county has their floodplain regulations, we have our floodplain regulations on the building elevation that needs to be above the designated floodplain in a particular area. So, yes, those come into play, and, and some of those, I think, have been as a result of anticipating, whether it's gonna be in the county or the city, for, or at least one of those has developed and filled based on being a water customer of the city, so.
I know Robbins.
Knowing when that may happen, they, they were looking ahead before they invested in a large facility.
Robbins is there at the corner of XL, and they're raising their, they're just steadily raising their ground level higher and higher as they prepare.
There is a little difference, I think, in the, in some of our regs, county regulations versus city, but those floodplain regulations would apply if we annex them, yes.
Yeah, I just wanna make one comment, I, you know, I read the study a couple times, I think, you know, I understand the numbers and everything that's there, but, but the thing that's not emphasized here, and Linda brought it out, if, if you annex it, then all the city ordinance is going to affect, and that changes the floodplain things, because we put in some pretty draconian floodplain regulations because of Wildcat Creek. The other one revenue thing that's not here that would irritate me if I was a homeowner is essentially, this is all great, you know, the city annexes it and we make more revenue, but what it doesn't tell you is that everybody out there gets 50 mils added to their property tax bill. And, and, and that's the key part that's missing here, and I mean, and you said that, that wasn't part of the analysis, it's part of the other deal. But, but 50 mils, plus you add all the city regulations, why did this area grow? Because they didn't get hit with 50 mils and all the regulations. So, if you annex it, the idea that we're gonna have this scenario three high alternative, in my mind, never gonna happen, because the people that are there now are gonna move somewhere else, and anybody else that wants to build is gonna move somewhere else. And, and so, that, that's the main issue I have with it, but I'd be interested in hearing public comment on the topic.
I think the commission has been asking questions, and are there any further questions from commissioners before we open a public hearing? Okay. At this point, I'd like to open the public hearing, we have a rule about five minutes.
Mayor, it's, it's not a public hearing, it's just public comments.
Public comments, wrong word, thank you. So, public comments, so at this point, if you'd like to come forward and sign the sheet with your name and address, we would be, we would be interested in hearing from you.
We do have a five-minute limit.
Yeah.
Yep.
Dan Deckett, I served Blue Township as trustee, lived out there for 37 years. I appreciate what Mr. Butler just said, I think that says a lot of what my constituents, friends, neighbors, and people in our community feel. And I was there in 91 when the sewer district was formed, and I've been through, seen a lot of changes out there since I moved out there 37 years ago. And I know there's a group that wants to incorporate, I've been to, to meetings in Westmoreland when those, those things were presented, and as you all know, were turned down for insufficient documents. I'm not sure that's a very good solution. I just hope that, that the, as Mr. Butler said, don't just consider how much money the city's gonna take in by annexing our area, think about what it's gonna cost you and what it's gonna cost the residents, a lot of whom are, like myself, becoming seniors, and they're on fixed incomes and they've been in their home for 37 years and raised their kids there. And my own son has told me, Mom, Dad, I don't want you guys to move, this is my home. And he's gone and married and got his own kids, but that's his home, too. And outside my family, I love the place where I am, and that's where I wanna be till the day I die, and I hope you will consider that, because there's people, if you go 50 mils, they're not gonna be there. And as Mr. Butler said, and I agree with him 100%, that development's gonna come to a screech and halt, and that's kinda cost-hit. And I moved out there, I lived in Manhattan when I was first married, and until our, our second child came, we needed more room. We moved out there after looking at many houses in Manhattan, because what we, the house we could buy out there for the same money was so much lower, and the taxes were so much cheaper. That was our motivation, and I just hope you'll consider that. Like I said, I'll reemphasize, I, I like what Mr. Butler said, I think it pretty much hits the nail on the head of what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Robert Busby, live at 4500 Green Valley Road, so part of that area under consideration. First, thank you for your time, thank you for considering all of this and putting an awful lot of effort into it, I know the study was not cheap. As I look at that and I see the different areas, I'm not gonna reiterate, though I will just say that I agree with what Mr. Deckett said. It would be a significant concern for the folks who live in FAZ four and in FAZ three, which are the primary residential portions, to have a 50 mil levy. Additionally, some of the things discussed, for any additional infrastructure, reworking of roads, it's not lost on us that it would also be, a lot of those would be paid with special assessments, if we had to have, you know, for an assessment district, if we had to have rework of all that concrete and so forth. So, that's a big concern for us out there. When we look at, say, FAZ two, three, and four, we know that if you were to ta, take that and look at it and say, well, we can just do one, two, and three, obviously, that's gonna create some interesting challenges, too. From a city perspective, though, I want you to kinda look at that, when you saw those numbers, it's tempting to see 18 to 23 million dollars over 20 years, it's about a million a year, not bad. There was an emphasis that that does not include the cost of debt service. Now, I don't know, I know if you mortgage a house and it's gonna cost you a little bit, it's about twice as much for the debt service by the time you're done paying for it. So, it's probably a lot less than what we're looking at. So, I would say, we, we would object, most of us, I think, to, to being annexed for those reasons. Thanks.
Does anyone else wish to speak?
Thank you very much. I appreciate your efforts on, on all of you, because this is no small challenge, and I had no idea when I signed up to be commissioner in Blue Township in the area that was fastest-growing that it would be as complex as it is. And I'm glad you are recognizing some of those challenges. It is, and has been, a real dedication, at least as I've been there, for us to do things like drainage and to improve the services to the people and try and get better waterlines for some of the, Eagles Landing, I think is probably the place where the challenges are. And I guess I step forward merely to say there are other complications, like revenue-neutral rates that the state has put upon us for what growth you might get, we might not be able to roll those numbers up in any way, shape, or form to get a, a yes vote on those anticipated costs. And when you talk about the fire department, we have built four across our county in the time that I've been a commissioner, all being up to standard, and none of them have been much more than 3 million, though they don't house anybody. But we do serve Blue Township, and we have an obligation to the east side of the dam out of Blue Township, and so, we don't necessarily lose obligations to service by just what happens in this area. There's, there's need for a lot of conversation to understand the impacts and the opportunities. And I, as I have said sometimes when we were, you were talking fire department in the rural area, that we said, well, maybe Ellsberg could serve over to Randolph, but we couldn't get the conversation. And I checked, in the past year, we have put 1.5 million dollars into your police department, and yet our elected sheriff and our obligations and our issues about going to the courts and the attorneys and stuff have still stayed heavily on our county. And we've also done an appraisal and saved a dark store loss with our appraisers in your city. And so, I hope we have more conversation, a more chance to see that we are all interested in having a very quality community with opportunities for everything that goes on. We accepted a grade school over there, which really upped our transportation challenges, and I think, Linda, I appreciate you kind of asking some of that question. When you're there in the morning and I see the trucks coming in and out to where you're building your, your businesses, or your, excuse me, your rural park, your parks and rec, storage and office things and.
Our consolidated maintenance.
Maintenance, thank you, I can't, it's such a pretty name, I can't come up with it, but.
Took me a while.
I see the traffic, and I almost saw a kid go under one of those trucks the other day, and it just breaks my heart to see trucks going in front of people trying to go back and forth when we know from the Chamber of Commerce, 40% of the people in my side comes into Manhattan to work, and 40% of yours are going to Caterpillar and to different places. We have an ability to grow together, but there must be some real conversation about ways to mediate and achieve things without duplicating and adding costs. And I'm. And I'm very willing to work with you, and I understand your challenges, I hope you'll really appreciate ours. I don't think we had, personally, I didn't have any chance to have any of this discussion prior to this presentation, and that's okay, I don't know anything anyway, but thank you for what you're doing and continue to work with you, thank you.
Thank you, Dee. Does anyone else wish to speak today? Okay. So I will close the public comment time. Thank you very much, we appreciate you coming this evening and sticking with us. Commission, commissioners?
Yes, I think, like I said earlier, this initiative didn't come forward as let's do this idea, it came forward, like I said, when Commissioner Dodson was here, as another option to look at, because those were the conversations that were happening, and to do a compare analysis. We've had annexation studies in the past as well, something that Eric alluded to when he first got up here. As our city moves forward, we do need to look at other options that are not so reliant on Kansas State University and Fort Riley, and look at ways to expand our growth, meet the potential needs. At the same time, I'm not sure going into phase two is the appropriate way right now. We have so many challenges within our own city as far as getting staff and meeting the needs and our projects and everything else. And one of the things I said at the retreat is I want to hold back on more projects until we get everything that we have under control, before we have more discussions about more projects and all the funding sources. And the other challenge is, sometimes we put in so much investment, thinking there's a return on investment, and sometimes it's less than what we anticipated, or not enough to meet the needs of a growing community. I think we have a good partnership with Riley County as well as Potawatomi County, I think we're all working together to make the entire region a better place for citizens and businesses to settle here. If there is another business that wants to come here and have a preference for a island annexation, as Heritage Plaza did, I would like to keep those options open, and maybe have this discussion at a later date, maybe with a different commissioner, or maybe with a different commission as it is. But it's something we need to look at about how we're going to grow together, but I'm not sure this is the time for that. So I, I won't be asking city staff to move forward with phase two, but if, want to leave it open for businesses to request that type of annexation, or whatever services they need from the city, and work with having policies to work with those, work with them individually. Thank you for all of you that came out this evening as well, to participate in the conversation. This wasn't going to be a decision that we were going to make tonight, mostly like we are talking right now, what the commissioners want to see happen.
Yeah, my, my thoughts on it, the numbers tell me that under no circumstances should we ever consider annexing Area Four, it's just not going to work. One, two, and three, a possibility, you know, one, perhaps because it connects Heritage Square to the rest of the city, and Rob's got to drive his snowplow across there anyway to get to Heritage Square, that may make sense, there's no residential units there. So I might consider one. Two and three only if the people there do what Heritage Square did, and that is request to be annexed, and it may be a piece of it or not, but, but short of, you know, them requesting it, I wouldn't touch it either, so I, so I agree with Commissioner Reddy, I wouldn't pursue anything, unless anybody in that area wants to be, you know, annexed, or if it makes sense, because we have to traverse Area One anyway to get to Heritage Square, to, to go ahead and, and maybe pursue annexing that, but that's the only one I would consider.
I'm pretty much in the same place. Four, no. One, two, or three, possibly, but I didn't, haven't heard a sense of urgency that we need to annex them to attract anything, that we can do it if someone requests, which I'd be very open to if we have someone who wants to invest over there, and then we could do an annexation. But like I said, I'm just not seeing the justification just to do it, to do it right at this point in time.
Yeah, the people at section four, section four made the conscious decision, I don't want to live in Manhattan, so there's no reason to make them. And so, my, my only concern, the chambers here represented, because we need buildings, we need land, we need land for businesses, we need land for stuff, and we don't have any, anywhere else except perhaps out east of town, and so the concern becomes, if, if, yeah, I know that the corner of XL, the northeast corner of XL and 24 is potentially a business park, the problem is that's a long ways out there if we're going to jump way out there to island annex them, and if we just do an area out there, then we still got to provide fire service, so it becomes, it's, unless we do a bunch of space, you can't really justify providing the, the fire service for it, because, but you have to provide the fire service for it. And so, and the section three south of 24, yeah, there's no reason to, to glomp onto that residential stuff there, but if the, if the commercial things along the front side want to get better water service, but then we're into the fire station need also there. So I don't know, if, if, if the demand is, is great, if the opportunity is great, then I think we, we could make a, you could make an argument for, yeah, some of two, simply because that is our only opportunity really in the near future to do anything with, with commercial industrial type land, but that is just a long ways out there, but if that's the only option we might have at some point, then we're going to probably have to, to do something, but then that pulls the trigger on more and better fire service, which, which is hard, hard to balance that, unless it is such a great opportunity that we, we have to, and so I'm, I'm willing to look at that if the time comes and that we need it, we need to do that for a, for a business park. But yeah, the, the residential part of three is no good, and I'm not sure if, if Part One, if there's some demand there, then we probably ought to move forward with that, that would be easy enough, but we, I think we have to kind of just, I think we can kind of rest for just a little bit, we don't want to, yeah, miss out on opportunity here, but if there's, if there's some demand and there's some need, then we sure should move forward, but I, we don't know that yet.
I support moving forward, but our question tonight from the city administration is, phase two would develop an extension of services plan, which has to be done per the Kansas statute, for any areas to be considered for annexation. And two, identify an anticipated timeline and phasing plan, and three, provide a review of Manhattan's existing water and wastewater cost share and extension of services, and four, provide recommended revisions to address unique needs along US Highway 24. I support the idea of exploring this further and pursuing phase two of this study. We don't know, there's so much we don't know about this. Generally, I would support one and two. And three, I mean, I get, we, we need to have a conversation about what do we, what do we see in the future for three that would make us want to really annex it. I'm not eager to take on four, because it's huge, and, but I think there's, we need some, we have, the Chamber of Commerce has spoken for at least five years now about the need for industrial park expansion, and this, section two, and even three, has that opportunity here. We know that there are a lot of businesses who are already there, who have just taken it on their own initiative, but our services have meant that that was possible. So I want to encourage business, not stifle it, I want to encourage, we are blocked on so many sides by the high hills, by Fort Riley, I don't want the east side of Manhattan to be blocked, and if we don't think in a forward fashion, that's entirely what could happen. And, you know, there are certain rules for cities, and we would, the police, once, the police in every other city have a fire chief, a, a, a police chief. We happen to have consolidated government here, that includes our city and county, and they're perfectly fine and respected police force, and they're accredited, and they are recognized for their forward thinking. And so I'm not interested in, at this point, it seems to me that this study is necessary for us to consider what to do next, and this study alone took two and a half years with COVID, and so I don't expect this study to be done, I bet it takes two years or 18 months, and then we can start really talking about what we want to see. I'm not dazzled by the money that, because just my experience with estimates with the government is that they always come in higher than what we planned, it seldom does it come in right on the nose, and so I, I think we have, and, and when we get out of COVID, I expect a burst of activity with our businesses, with our, just community as a whole, and I'm eager to see that, that expansion and growth. So I'd like to encourage commissioners to support a, a second phase, that would be, pick, pick a phase, I mean, let's do the whole thing, one, two, and three anyway, and then we can have all the information and decide at some future time, what is it we really want to do, and that may change. In two years, there'll be new commissioners here, and so, but we will have this foundational data that we can look at. So that would be my, my request, that you not just consider saying no, but to talk about what is possible.
Well, I'm still for, you know, if, if people out there want to be annexed, they can request it, like the Heritage Square thing, otherwise, no, I wouldn't waste any time continuing studying this, we've got other things to do.
Yeah, and as said before, I haven't heard the argument that by us annexing it, it's going to provide some extra incentive that we should go ahead and spend the money or take on having to provide services there in, on the anticipation that something is going to happen. I think if we were to get somebody who wants to be out there, I think we could move pretty quickly to figure out what we can do to make that happen. And just as studies age, by the time it gets done, is it the best information at the, at the time, we were already talking about this one, whether, you know, the information had already aged and whether a lot of the numbers were still valid. And I think when we met at a retreat, one of the other things we heard is, you know, our staff is very understaffed and is kind of tapped out too, and it's going to take a lot of their resources in order to do it, which I don't mind doing if we have someone who wants to put something out there, but just to do it, to do it, I just can't see it at this point in time.
How long does an annexation process, process take? So if we have a business that wants to come out there, and we need to annex, and we need to zone, and whatever it all is involved, how long will, is, is that a year before we get all the pieces in place?
So generally, if you have a owner that is requesting annexation, and it's an island annexation, it's going to take a little bit longer, but generally, probably five months at least to go through that process, maybe a little bit shorter, maybe a little bit longer, depends on the, the information.
What you're running to, okay.
Area One would not need that study, Area One is adjacent to the city and we can annex it, so it does not need a services plan from that perspective, but the other areas would require that.
How long after, okay, how long after you annex, like Area One, could you proceed with an annex of Area Two, let's, I'm just hypothetical, can you do it incrementally and not, don't have to think about a larger area?
It may not be an island annexation, it would be a contiguous, but, you know, a unilateral process, so if the, if the owner isn't requesting annexation, the unilateral process still has more hearings involved, probably, is it probably close to another five months, or maybe, maybe a little bit shorter?
Well, if it's unilateral, it's probably a little longer.
Longer than that, okay.
The statute does require the services plan when it's unilateral.
Even, right, even if it's contiguous.
So I'm thinking about Area, Area One, and then we get heritage to heritage, the heritage area, so the next one is, let's say, Area Three, they're sticking on the south side, that, then that becomes contiguous to the heritage area, right?
Right.
So we really aren't, it, it really...
It would not require a services plan.
Yeah, it would be quicker, yeah, because of the contiguous nature, if, if six, eight months is all, five months is all that's needed.
It would require us to do a pretty thorough evaluation, though, to make a recommendation, might not require a detailed services plan, but, yeah.
That's why I'm thinking this phase two study is necessary for the future of our community.
In the infamous words of Commissioner Reddy, I need more information. I, I guess my question is, is how much demand is there currently, you said you've had some inquiries, okay, is that three businesses and $50,000 of the property tax, is it six businesses and a potential of 200 jobs, or, that's, if, if there's a, that's like, I don't, I don't have enough information to decide, yes, to pull the trigger and move forward. I think we should always be thinking about how to expand and move forward, but, and I don't know, is it, is it a $200,000 contract for, for the next, next phase, is it a $500,000 contract, is it a $20,000, if it's, yeah, if it was, if it wasn't a terribly expensive process to move forward, knowing that we don't really have, have a, a good reason to move forward right this second, but if we, if it was a reasonable price, and we knew that you could tell us secretly, or somehow if it's, if it's not public knowledge yet, that we have a reason to do it, that's, I'm kind of, I don't have enough information to say, yes, we should pull the trigger, but there might be enough information out there that I would want to pull the trigger if I knew it, but I don't know it. So that's where I, I'm, I'm, I'm always interested in, in growth, reasonable growth of areas that are needed to, to provide us a, a use that we need, or if there's demand that I just don't know about, but I, I don't know that right now, and so, but...
I think, like I said, this came about not because of city staff, but because of all the discussions that were happening, so there wasn't like, we have this big business coming, let's do this, that kind of action. I, I really respect what, what the mayor is saying, and I think initially, when we were doing the annex conversations even a few years ago, and even when I was running for office in 2013, there was always that question, are you going to annex, you know, Blue Township or anything, anything of that sort, and I think those discussions will continue. My, I think the reason I'm trying to put a pause on this is, we just have so many things right now that we need to complete, and as much as I want to look into the future, I don't think any of this will happen with even the four of us on the commission. I think anything that will happen might happen after, you know, in the next five years, after a study is done, and then the study will be old, and then they'll do another study. I just don't think we're in a position to put in that kind of manpower and finances at this time. I do think, when we talk about the housing study, if we need to look at pockets of areas to develop, redevelop, have different types of housing, I mean, we need to be open-minded about those things, or businesses that are, and we, we need to, like I said, stay away from being attached so much to the university and Fort Riley and look at expanding in different ways, but I think those can also come under either individual annexations or with partnerships with Potawatomi County and their businesses and residential areas, so I, I think we need to look at other options. I think what we have in front of us is, is good, but I, I just don't feel comfortable putting in more money, it's going to be, I would think, at least 150,000 if not more, and even take 15, you know, a year and a half, and more staff time, and I, I just don't feel we are in a position to do that at this time. And I, I just don't feel we are in a position to do that at this time.
I guess I'd like to ask, was the, did you plug in the money for this study when you built the budget for capital improvements projects or?
We have not. We are, we are utilizing mostly economic development as well as some utilities to fund this particular study. And I think it was in the neighborhood of seventy-five, eighty?
This one was ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight, there we go.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's going to depend on, you know, the cost of Phase Two is going to depend on the scope of Phase Two and what areas you're talking about. So one, two, and, again, you don't need to do a services plan on one, two, and three. I mean, we could bring back some estimates, but what I'm hearing is unless there's a strong need to, from interest, and I would say there's, there's sporadic interest from, from different aspects of that. So nothing that you can really glom onto and they would probably work fine as a standalone request for, for that. But certainly Area One is an area that could be looked at. Again, there's nothing pressing that particular issue either, so that's kind of, but we could certainly bring back some, some estimates for the commission and some of the, how much time we think those would, particular areas might take.
Well, to, you know, to sum up, what I'm hearing is the majority of the commission has basically expressed a desire not to continue with the study. And the exception might be, as Mark says, if there's a specific group, like the Heritage Square group, that wishes to be annexed, that we might consider that. But, but other than that, I think that pretty much, that's how I understand the conversation.
Yeah, that was, I understood that.
I understand what you're saying. I think we should be looking at good planning so that our future, so we have an idea for the future. And what we're going to do is one island at a time. So if that's what you're, if that's the direction from the commission, that'll be what we do. Is there any other comment by anyone? Okay.
All right, I, Commissioner, thank you for your time, Julie. It's been a longer working relationship than, than we had originally planned, but we do appreciate your firm's involvement. I think you provided some great base information for us, for everybody, to be able to look at for the future and help guide some future decision-making on. So thank you.
I think it's good that we have this much information, so appreciate your effort. It's been major, I'm sure, and the effort of the city staff. Thank you all. Thanks for coming tonight.